Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Westfield Board of Education. It's Tuesday, May 24th at 2022. We're in the Town Hall chambers. Alan, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Kerry. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Mrs. Drew?
Here.
Mr. Healy? Mrs. Granato?
Here.
Mr. Lackavoli?
Here.
Dr. Regan Lefebvre?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Vice Chairperson, Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Chairman, Mr. Kerry?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Representative Lena Ucello. Lena Ucello, excuse me. All present.
Thank you. Before we move on to the pledge, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for all those who lost their lives in Uvalde, Texas. Thank you. If Mr. Lackavoli would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There is no student staff recognition tonight. We'll move on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the May 10, 2022 regularly scheduled board meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With any comments, discussions? Seeing none with a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
I abstain.
So noted.
Motion carries. Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is closed. Communication, Mr. Emmett.
Thank you, Mr. Kerry. Good evening, everyone. Several items for you this evening. You have a couple of action items before you, one of which is the rescinding of the nonrenewal notices. We talked about this being a priority, and as the Town Council has allocated our budget, the reduction is such that we will be able to return all of our staff to their positions for next year. In addition to that, we have an approval this evening for the revised 2022-2023 budget. We needed to come up with reductions to the tune of approximately $446,000. We have done this primarily through the process of recognizing savings with retirements and resignations, as well as an increase in the tuition, the per pupil tuition, for our open choice students. And again, the Finance and Operations Committee talked about that, and you'll hear more about that later on in this meeting. Couple of other items just with regard to COVID. We did see the numbers start to drop a little bit last week. Again, our trajectory this week thus far is looking favorable. I wouldn't say that we're not seeing cases, but we looked at the last four weeks of the Saturday, Sunday, Monday combination, where we tend to see the larger numbers, and over the past four weeks, we reported 39 cases, 40 cases, 31 cases last week, and then this past weekend, 13. So we've seen the numbers start to head downward. We're hopeful that that trend certainly continues. With regard to some other items that are going on, it is award season, it is senior picnic season, we are getting very close to graduation time, step up ceremonies, a variety of different events. So tomorrow evening at Millwoods Park at 6:00, we will have our annual PEP graduation for our latest class of parent leaders. Also tomorrow evening, there will be a scholarship event happening at Weathersfield High School. I'll sneak over to it at 6:30. I certainly want to say a special thank you to our student leaders at Weathersfield High School. I know several of you attended the cabaret this past Saturday and will be speaking about it during board comment, but, you know, had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Roats, who assisted the students with this effort, and he reported yesterday that this effort raised $8,300 for Ukrainian relief, and I think that really speaks volumes to our student leaders and the impact that they have on our community. Also want to let you know that we have conducted interviews for our Teacher of the Year. That announcement will be forthcoming very shortly. We will be meeting on Tuesday of next week for the Para-Educator of the Year interviews, and these are surprises, so the individuals don't know it's coming, but we get there with flowers, balloons, and all the pomp and circumstance. So we will be honoring two of our esteemed colleagues in the upcoming week or so. In addition to that, we have an additional award. I'm going to keep it under my hat, but we do have an award that one of our administrators has won. There'll be more information forthcoming on that very shortly. Also want to talk with you about an emergency drill that occurred today. I put that in the Friday update. Mr. Bearball, who's in attendance this evening, represented the district at a emergency drill here at the EOC office downstairs. Today's drill was related to a weather event for us on our end. Weathersfield High School serves as a shelter for the town, so for us, we provide support with regard to making sure the generator is up and running, making sure our shower facilities, our kitchen facilities are ready to use, and we're also at the ready with regard to communication efforts in the event that we need to get that message out to the community. And also got word over the course of the weekend, some excellent news. I reached outreach by Judy Keane, our benefactor from the Keane Foundation, and she reports that the Keane Foundation will be receiving $300,000 of state American Rescue Plan funding to be able to support our ongoing programs and our ongoing partnership. One of the things that Judy and I had talked about already was, you know, enhancing our programs at Silas Dean Middle School. And ironically, today I was meeting with one of our newest teachers, who will be starting as a science teacher at Silas Dean Middle School next year, and one of the things he already talked about was after-school programs and being able to get back to the community. So we are very happy and certainly very appreciative of Judy's efforts. It certainly benefits our kids. And again, just want to remind everybody with regard to this weekend. I know John will be talking about it, but it is the annual Memorial Day Parade, so hopefully you will be there. It is an event that we certainly look forward to every year, so I hope to see you there. Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Moving on to action items. Ms. Drew, I believe you have a motion for us?
Yes. I move that the Weathersfield Board of Education rescind the action taken on April 26, 2022 regarding the nonrenewal notices of the following 52 nontenured teachers. ID numbers 906601, 906721, 906716, 906433, 906693, 906687, 906675, 906706, 906674, 905558, 906673, 906567, 906373, 906623, 906641, 906609, 906607, 906602, 906606, 906147, 904185, 906734, 906546, 906677, 906715, 906666, 906678, 906676, 906682, 906679, 906691, 906684, 906711, 906548, 906339, 906529, 906532, 906533, 906536, 906541, 906545, 906449, 906496, 906640, 906470, 906604, 906452, 905832, 906421, 906448, 906451, and last but not least, 906406.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions or discussion? Mr. Emmett, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of the fact, the original nonrenewal notice included 54 teachers, and you'll see this time around is only 52. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear with everybody that two of the individuals were on one-year contracts, and I am very proud to say that both of those individuals, one has already signed a contract and will be with us permanently for a position that's been created through retirement, and then the other individual, we expect to bring aboard full-time as well to replace a retirement. So very happy that those two are not on the list because they have already been employed.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Seeing none with a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Drew, I believe you have another motion for us?
Another one. I move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve the revised 2022-23 operating budget in the amount of $59,869,792.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any, Mr. Emmett, any discussion?
Yeah, the primary drivers for this reduction, we're looking at savings of $240,000 due to additional State of Connecticut Choice revenue. It's $2,000 per student. The other large savings, we're projecting savings from seven additional WFT retirements. Again, as I am signing contracts with new hires, many of the situations are, they are replacing somebody that was at top step, so we're looking for $120,000 savings there. The reduction to the defined benefit pension contribution, that number comes from the town. In addition to that, the reduction to the health insurance contribution of $28,455, also that figure comes from the town. And then our one wild card reduction of special education outplace tuition, it's $39,809, for a total of $446,000 reductions.
Thank you. And on top of the $300,000 that you reduced before you gave, presented your budget to us, correct?
It's correct.
So roughly $750,000?
Yes.
We cut off the bottom line. So I'd like to thank Mr. Emmett, Mr. Kazakh, and the whole central office team for their hard work on this budget. It was definitely a tough budget season, but we got through it. I'd like to also thank the leadership of the Town Council, always working hard to try to find ways to lessen the blow and work with the Board of Ed to find a happy medium, and we were able to yet again find a happy medium where there's no impact on services to our students and staff. So it's always a great budget season when we can say that. Any other comments?
Can I just clarify?
Yes.
Do we have any reduction in staff in the end?
We do not.
The net reduction is zero.
That is correct.
I have a, thank you very much for where we are right now. It is a gift, but what concerns me is down the road. Really, these FSR funds are going to disappear, and we're going to start looking at different ways and avenues, so I think we need to start planning for those rainy days that are going to be coming up. Like they're doing hurricane season, we start, need to start naming our budgets because it's going to be pretty rough.
Budget John.
Or Fiji. No, seriously, you know, we've been, this was not easy, so we've got a lot to look at. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. With a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Announcements and information, please make sure you check your packet for meetings that are coming up for subcommittees. If you cannot make it, please let the chair know. Meetings held, Special Board meeting on 5/13/22. That was a meeting to discuss a student matter. On 5/17/22, Students, Programs, and Services Committee was canceled. CREC Council on 5/18/22, Ms. Granato.
Okay, the CREC Council met for its annual meeting and council meeting on Wednesday, May 18, 2022. The CREC Council is a Capital Region Education Council, which Weathersfield is a member, along with 35 other surrounding towns, and the Council is responsible for the regional magnet schools and Project Choice. They have organized and run Hartford's Head Start. The annual meeting, which in the past has been held at a magnet school, was a Zoom meeting this year, and I was very pleased that Michael Emmett joined us. Thank you, Michael. The Council was welcomed by Lydia Tadone, our chairperson. She thanked all CREC personnel for their dedication to another very challenging year. And Dr. Greg Florio, the executive director of CREC, awarded the John J. Allison Jr. Legacy Award to the former superintendent of West Hartford Schools, Tom Moore, for his understanding the importance of courageously doing what's right for kids. Mr. Moore expressed his gratitude for the partnership he's had with CREC, and scholarships were also awarded to students for overcoming adversity. Dr. Florio then gave a presentation on CREC's year in review. The focus has been on combining the themes of equity and equality and to attract new students to CREC's programs. He also spoke of the successes of the Block Party, LEAP program, and the opening of the new Anna Gray School. Interesting info is that the former Soundbridge CREC school in Weathersfield for hearing impaired will now be a pre-K, 3 and 4. More info to follow. Focuses going forward are on counting equity, continuing equity work, getting staff everything they need to be successful, and to continue advocating for funding from the state. The annual meeting was followed by our council meeting with committee reports and the approval of a consent agenda. During the council comments, there was a discussion on Project Choice students and Dollars for Scholars. The AVON Dollars for Scholars has changed their mission statement to include all students to be eligible for scholarships. Other towns are still investigating. Other council members had concerns centered on dress code and flag display. More details are available on the CREC website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Facilities and Meetings Committee meeting held last night, 5/23/22. Mr. Cassio?
Chuck, thank you. We had a great meeting last night, Stone Building, at 6:00 PM. In attendance were Jim, Janice, superintendent, and Chuck from the...
Holliers.
Holliers. We also had guests. We actually had guests. Matt and Amanda joined us. So the meeting was called to order, and we started reviewing the current school building plan. Great conversation came about, and the committee felt it was imperative that was continued with a single referendum. So with that information, the superintendent is going to be meeting tomorrow with the town officials and going over that particular scenario. Also, there was some discussion regarding what can be allowed in the budget, what do we need to put in the budget, and how do we get it in? And so the committee came up with a couple of scenarios, and Mr. Emmett has not yet discussed that with the town, and he'll have a conversation tomorrow. And one of the scenarios is the way we had it before, another one is going to include geothermal. So we've got two different scenarios that are out there. So the good news is that we're trying to be included, inclusive. We also discussed design, and when it comes to that area, we discussed the concern that was brought up at the last board meeting regarding handicapped bathrooms, and so there was just a lot of good conversation and a lot of education as well, finding out how we go about doing that. So with that being said, the superintendent will be meeting with the town manager tomorrow. They will then go to the bond council. Our goal is to get it set by June 30, and we're working backwards with that particular event. So the other discussion that occurred was getting the communications out on this, getting the website going on the school, getting the PR committee within the Board of Ed moving and starting to, you know, start the forces going, joining a committee. We also discussed when and how, how long the board can discuss this and when we have to cease talking about it. And all that information will be given to all of us, so we will know when that's going to be occurring. And, you know, we're doing our best, we're laying the groundwork, we've been very transparent, and it's been a long years happening. Unfortunately, we got in the mix for three years of COVID, pre, post, and escalation fees have gone up through the roof. Just a little bit of information, when we, when Bobby and I were on the committee, we first started, we started with $192 million. That's what it was, and now it's up to 271. So that's just the escalation. So once we move forward, you know, we have to agree to disagree, but wholeheartedly. The board is in agreement, and we're, you know, there's some rough road ahead of us, but we're all going to stay very positive with a single referendum. So that was the discussion on that. We will stay tuned for the conversation period of time. We'll stay tuned to the conversation that superintendent will have with the town manager. We will be getting updates on those. The other discussion that took place is that the custodial manager supervisor has resigned, and Sally Katz is now taking on that role, so we're in the midst of looking for a new custodial supervisor within our district and town. We also were told that there's not going to be any summer help. No, there was no money allocated in the town side budget to hire summer help to help clean the school buildings. So we are going to be putting on an additional burden with our custodial staff at this point. So we just want to thank them ahead of time for what they're going to have to be doing at this point. The other thing we have coming on in our schools this summer, we have summer guests that'll be approaching from a youth group, and they will be using, utilizing space at the high school, and they'll be coming in, gym A and B, and part of the cafeteria, and a few classrooms. They'll be sleeping in the building, and they are excited to be a part of it, and this was a situation not made by the superintendent, but it was made with the prior town manager. So the, both the town and the board have been communicating with this, and everyone seems to be on track, as well as the youth group that are going to be coming into town and helping with families, helping them with construction projects, cleaning their homes, and coming back and reprogramming the whole thing. So I think that we are in good shape, and we're looking at, things change daily, so we have to be very flexible, and we have to sometimes face reality, and, you know, we have to understand that this is not a, this referendum that's going to come, it's not about one school, it's about our community of schools, that we're going to be a community working together and making it happen, and we're all going to be a part of it, and it's, it's going to be at high stakes, so we're excited. Got to keep positive and move forward. I think that was it as far as what happened last night, and keep on going.
Thank you, John.
Chuck, can I add to that or no?
No, not a discussion, I don't. During a board comment, you can. Move on, Finance and Information Management Committee, 5/24/22, before this meeting. Amanda?
So we met at 6:00 this evening. Currently, we are $49,000 over budget, but that is a decrease from the last meeting. We discussed a little bit more detail in regards to the $446,000 reduction, but Mr. Emmett has already, you know, said in detail what and how we're able to absorb it. We recently approved the food service contract with Chartwell. However, we are still waiting for approval with the state in regards to that. There was some discussion on subsidizing the food for next year, whether we're going to do breakfast or lunch, you know, there's, there's enough in there for some things, but not for all. We have the RFP out for the cafeteria for the middle school, and again, and hopefully we will receive a bid. And then there was also some discussion on, since Autumn is now doing the, all the transportation, including Choice, there was a discussion about a possible return of the late bus. And that's what I got.
Thank you. Meeting scheduled, Finance and Information, on 6/28/22. CREC Council on 6/15/22, and Weathersfield Early Collaborative on 6/13/22. That's backwards, the dates. Okay. There's no unfinished business? Public comment? Public comment is closed. Board comment? Anyone in the board wishing to make comment? Ms. Granato?
Okay, first, I want to shout out for the cabaret for Ukraine, which was Saturday night, and it was outstanding. And that shout out goes to Sophie Torrance and Ally Lesser, who were the very talented organizers of this cabaret, and Jeff Roats for his being the facilitating teacher. Lot of work went into this, and boy, do we have very talented high school students. Also, what really struck me as I was watching and enjoying this whole show was the fact that these are global citizens. These young people decided together that they were going to put on this show, and as Mr. Emmett said, they collected almost $9,000 for the central kitchen, and that money would be going to Ukraine. I'm so proud of all of them. I also want to thank Judy Keane again. We thanked her through the years. I tease her many times that she's our town's fairy godmother, and boy, do we need you. And just one comment on the facilities. I was not able to go on Monday night, which bothered me, but we do know democracy can be messy, and we're not always going to agree, and I'm glad we could sit there and talk it out through the years on these, this facility project. One of the concerns we've had is items that need to be in for the state bonding, and also items that would be needed for the architect. So I think that was discussed, and we got closer to that. And I know Dr. Jen has mentioned the fact that we would want specific things in the buildings, and I hope that they all get in that are most important for a green school in a town that's growing and a town that's got progressive ideas for their education. Also, I want to see united town. Nobody puts the work in on a Board of Ed or a Town Council if they're not dedicated to this small town of Weathersfield, but we really need to act like a united town for this incredibly transformative project. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Mr. Cassio?
Yes. As alluded to, this Saturday is our Memorial Day Parade. If you look around the Town Council chambers tonight, this is Hamner School work of art. Becky Weaver, Hamner School art instructor, took upon herself to, you know, reach out to the school, and this is what we came forward from the school, and very proud of what was done. And just keep in mind, it's on a rotation, so next year it'll be another elementary school, and the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that. So rather than, the kids aren't, you know, they're asked if they'd like to do it, and this is what came up, so I think it's a great job. Also, we are very excited about Saturday. Our two essay winners, I mentioned to you before, Ella Komoneski and Alea Terro are going to be reading their essays, and they're really excited. And they're really excited. I'll be meeting with them tomorrow at the Silas Dean Middle School just to go over some tips and helpful hints. I think they're, they have more. They can give me some tips, but they're really excited. So let me just talk to you about what Saturday is going to bring. They'd like individuals for line of march to be there approximately 8:30. They'll, we'll line up and go, and parade begins at 9:00. We hope to be at the cemetery by 10:30[1691.94]